Today is September 9, 2021. My name is Paul Semple. I'm sitting in for Dave Nixon as Chair for this meeting. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chairman. This meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely in accordance with Section 20 of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 and shall afford adequate alternate means of public access via Microsoft Teams by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, Conference ID 930-467-091 hashtag, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, and we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue or hearing or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the Chair. We'll begin with a roll call of all Board members authorizing for this meeting. Let's start with Buck Upson.
James M. Upson, I approve of this format.
Randy Pradas, approve?
William Grau, approve?
Megan Storey, so approved.
Paul C. Semple, approve?
David H. Veitch, approve?
David R. Thompson, approve?
All right. The way this meeting will be conducted is that any citizens or Board members participating in the call via the phone only, for their name, we will need their name and the last four digits of their phone number for identification purposes. The hearing notice will be read by Sarah Clark, the Principal Permitting Coordinator, and the individual who is presenting, whether it be an attorney or the individual themselves, will make their presentation. Anyone in favor of the appeal or the application may then speak. The Chairman will then read all letters received by the Board, and anyone against the appeal or application may speak or ask a question, and the applicant may rebut testimony. Board members may direct questions to anyone present, and the Board will hear any further information, at which point we anticipate that the Board will close the public hearing and the Board will deliberate. Under Massachusetts law, a supermajority of members of the Board is necessary in order to approve any application. That would be four affirmative out of the five members of the Board who are voting. Today, voting in place of Dave Nixon is William Grau. All of the votes on appeal will be recorded, and all votes are taken by roll call. Okay. I guess we're ready to start. Application number 21-068.
Application number 21-068, Glenn and Rhonda Doherty, care of William G. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owners are property located at 19 Collins Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 13F Block 5, Lot N2. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a conforming lot via the demolition of the existing deck and the construction of additions and a deck. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and it is located 26 feet from the road where a 50-foot setback is required. The proposed additions and deck will comply with the setback requirements. The existing lot coverage is 2,053 square feet, 18.6 percent, and the proposed lot coverage is 2,718 square feet, 24.6 percent, where 60 percent is the maximum allowed. The lot contains 11,053 square feet in the GB3 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Mr. Litchfield, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Bill Litchfield here on behalf of the applicants, Glenn and Rhonda Doherty. First, I want to apologize to any members of the Board who went out to this site, or for that matter, Ridge Vale Road South, early or prior to yesterday. I was not aware that neither had been staked, and I apologize for that, the complications with which I won't bore you, but they were properly staked. And again, I apologize to anyone who went out in advance. I know that you've been out to Collins Lane right off of Crowell Road. I trust you did not stop at Nickerson Funeral Home for any other purposes, but you know the site. The Collins, the Dohartys, rather, would like to expand the house in the rear, and more importantly, or at least as importantly, add a garage. I will later get to the comparison to other properties in the neighborhood, but there's one comparison I would note of importance. There is not a single other house on Collins Lane or nearby on Crowell Road that doesn't have a garage, so I don't think it's at all unusual to have one, particularly on a rainy day like today. So I'll go into the criteria in regard to what is a fairly straightforward proposal. Sarah has been kind enough to put it up on the screen, a representation of, on the lower drawing, the garage shown on the left side of the house, and on the rear, an expansion for a family room and dining area, which the house does not now have. It was built in the early 60s. It's a very simple home. It'll remain a simple home if you approve the special permit, but it will have a garage and also a family home in the rear, a family room in the rear for the Dohartys to use in what they eventually hope to have as a year-round home. So I'll go into the criteria, notwithstanding the nonconformities as to use, because this is a GB zone, and the street setback, the site is adequate for a property built as a residence, as were all but two of the structures in the neighborhood. I can't frankly explain to you why we have a 50-foot setback in, here in the GB3 zone. The R40 zone, residential zone, doesn't ordinarily, you don't usually find that, that significant of a setback, but we nonetheless have it here. We're non-conforming because we're technically too, too close to the street, although in reality Collins Lane is narrower than it is as laid out. But if you approve the special permit, the site will remain adequate with the construction of the addition at the rear and the garage, as well as the deck, all of which are further from the street than are the, than is the existing house, and they meet all bulk and dimensional requirements under our bylaw. As to compatibility of size, on the third sheet of the handout that you have, you will see that we have an average-sized lot comparable to the others in the neighborhood. It is, however, at present the smallest structure with a footprint of just over 1,000 square feet. It has the lowest percentage of coverage, the lowest gross floor area and living area. It is, again, the sole house of all those on the third page without a garage. If you approve the special permit, as expanded, coverage is still consistent. In the, in the GB zone, there is not actually a building coverage requirement or limit, but I thought it would be useful for you to have that. We're now at 9.8 percent proposing to go to 18.2 percent, but still less than a couple of neighboring properties in the, that are also residential. Even with the garage, we remain compatible, and having a garage makes us more compatible. As to the extent of increase in nonconformity, there is none. Coverage increases, but it is far below that which is allowed in the GB zone, and it remains consistent with the abutting residential properties, as to suitability of site, notwithstanding that it is zoned for general business. It has always been a residence and will continue on. There are no environmental issues, no wetlands in the area, so that criteria is not particularly applicable. As to scale, sighting, mass, views, and vistas, the existing house is consistent with, but smaller than most others in the neighborhood. It's without impact on the views and vistas. If you approve the special permit, the scale will remain appropriate. It's without impact on the streetscape. It's shielded by fencing on three sides. It's not readily visible from Crowell Road. As to compatibility of use, that is unchanged. Despite the zoning, it remains residential. Adequacy of water and sewer, we are on town water and town sewer. There are four bedrooms. The Chair will read, I believe, a letter from the Board of Health indicating that Ms. Giorgio has no concerns on behalf of her Board. No impact on traffic flow and safety noise and litter, or adequacy of utilities, all of which are present on Collins Lane. So the question, as you know, is whether the proposed addition shown on the left-hand side at the top of what Sarah has on the screen, the addition at the rear of the property providing for a family and dining room with a garage and deck in a location not readily visible, is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I think that you can find that it is not. The proposed changes comply with all dimensional requirements of the bylaw. Every other nearby structure has a garage, and adding one is customary, appropriate, and frankly, more consistent with neighboring properties. The Chair will soon read correspondence, of which there is very little, but I am authorized by one abutter to indicate that he supports the proposal. This is the owner of 63 Crowell Road. He finds the architectural renderings to be extraordinarily well-done. That comment is from Mark Zebraat, who was the owner of 63 Crowell Road, and you may see his name on the plans. So at least one abutter while he didn't write is strongly in support of this proposal. So, in light of the criteria and the plans in this location, you can find that, I think, to be a simple proposal, a straightforward one, one that is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and is, in fact, not at all detrimental to the neighborhood. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you.
And thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application, who is online, and would please indicate by raising your hand that you'd like to speak?
There is no one that wishes to speak in favor of this application.
All right. I'll read the correspondence. We have a memorandum from Judith Giorgio, the health agent, dated September 7th, indicating, "I have reviewed the plans proposed for the addition at this property. The property is currently look, connected to the sewer system. The addition will not add sewer flow to the property. I have no concerns about the project." And then we have a correspondence from the Historic Business District Commission, which met on February 17th and voted five in favor and none opposing approving the application, with the standard condition that any changes or alterations to the approved certificate of appropriateness requires additional approval by the Historic Business District Commission. And then we have a letter from David Baker, dated August 31, 2021, to David Nixon. With reference to your letter to me dated August 19, 2021, I take no exception to application 21-068. My property is close by at 912 Main Street, but the applicant's proposal will have, will not have any effect on my property, as far as I can tell. Thank you for the information, David J. Baker. Well, I'll ask if anyone has an opinion against the appeal or may wish to ask a specific question.
There is no one that wishes to speak in opposition or has a specific question.
All right. Why don't we deal with questions from Board members, then? Why don't we start with Bill?
I have no questions of this application.
All right. Megan?
I have no questions.
Dave Veitch has no questions.
David Thompson has no questions.
Buck has no questions.
Randy Pradas has no questions.
And I have no questions. Do I hear a motion to close the hearing and move into deliberations?
I so move.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay. Let's go into deliberations, then, and why don't we start with Bill?
This certainly seems to be a valid application in looking at the property, and I don't believe it has any detrimental impact on the community, and I would support it.
Thank you. Megan?
It certainly seems like it meets all of our criteria, and I would support it as well.
Dave Veitch?
Yes, it meets all the criteria. It's certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I think it's an improvement and brings it up to par with the neighborhood, so I'll support it.
Okay.
David Thompson agrees with Dave Veitch in...
All right. Buck?
Buck Upson, and I second exactly what David Veitch said.
And Randy?
I approve of the board's comments.
All right, and I agree with all the previous comments. Do we see a need for any conditions on this?
I, I'm not sure. I mean, it's a, it's, I, I guess what I think is the first condition about construction activity in vehicles to be contained on the site or with permission from neighbors probably covers everything that needs to be covered in this location, I would think.
What, Bill, do you know the plans for when construction would take place, Bill Litchfield?
No, I, Bill Litchfield, no, I do not, Mr. Chairman. I, I would, however, though it's not up to me. I think Mr. Veitch is correct. This is not, first of all, it's not an extraordinarily large project, but I think it'll probably, if they can start as soon as they would like to, it'll be done before summer, but as long as vehicles are off, kept off of Collins Lane or on neighbors' property with permission, I don't see a particular problem or a need for further conditions.
Do any other members have concerns about conditions? All right. How about a motion to approve with those conditions?
I so move.
Second? All right, Buck seconds. All those in favor, please raise your hands. That's unanimous approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Sarah, our next 21-071.
Application number 21-071, the Caroline A. Terry Trust, 2001, care of William G. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owner of property located at 80 Ridge Vale Road South, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 7B Block 14, Lot G63. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the construction of a deck. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and that it is located 14.2 feet from the road where a 25-foot setback is required, 10.8 feet from the easterly abut, and 14.8 feet from the westerly abut where a 15-foot setback is required, and 48 feet from the coastal conservancy district. The proposed deck will be non-conforming, and that it will be located 13.4 feet from the easterly abut where a 15-foot setback is required, and 13.4 feet from the coastal conservancy district where a 50-foot setback is required. The lot is non-conforming, and that it contains 7,612 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Okay. Mr. Litchfield?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Bill Litchfield here on behalf of Carolyn and Gary Terry. Carolyn is trustee of the trust, owns the property, 80 Ridge Vale Road South in Chatham, not South Chatham, although it's on the border. The proposal, as you know, is to construct a deck on the rear of an existing house, which is at the top of a coastal bank above Bucks Creek or Sulfur Springs, depending how you want to call it. Sarah has been kind enough to bring up the site plan, and there it is. Ridge Vale Road South is up at the top. Ridge Vale Road South is actually much, much wider legally than it is, in fact, as shown on that plan. And what we're proposing is fairly simple. It is a 275 or 280-square-foot deck to be built on the south side of the house, where Sarah now has the cursor. There is also shown both to the left and right, or east and west, significant area of mitigation planting and further mitigation planting down toward the south, further in the more environmentally sensitive portion of the lot. So it is a simple enough proposal. I'll go into the criteria, and I think you can find that it does meet the criteria for the granting of a special permit. As to adequacy of site, including building, coverage, and setbacks, we have a non-conforming lot. It was adequate for the existing house, but the lot was created in 1949. The house was built approximately 1952, both of which were before we had a zoning bylaw. Notwithstanding its proximity to the top of the coastal bank and the sidelines, the existing site is adequate. I think you can find the site to be adequate for construction of a deck at the rear. It is further from the sidelines than is the existing house, and it is 65 feet from the mean high watermark. It is significantly further back than the legal ad might make it appear. There's no change in coverage. As to compatibility of size, I didn't do what I ordinarily do in terms of a comparison, because this isn't something that has size per se. This is a deck. But all the neighborhood lots were created in 1949. Before the taking of Ridge Vale Road South, this lot was the largest lot in the neighborhood at 9,400 square feet, although the deck, again, doesn't impact size. It is at 899 square feet, a very small house. If you approve the special permit, obviously, there'd be no change in the house, but by way of comparison, many of the houses on the street at 50 Ridge Vale South, 60, 72, and 86 Ridge Vale South have similar or much larger decks ranging up to 572 square feet, which is more than twice the size of what we're seeking. As to the extent of increase in nonconformity, we currently have those in the, as read by Sarah, lot size, coastal conservancy district... Sarah, lot size, coastal conservancy district, and sideline nonconformities. If you approve the special permit, there's no change in the sidelines, and the change in proximity to the top of the coastal bank is addressed by the mitigation plantings and reduction of the lawn. And by virtue of it being pervious, a pervious structure, it has lesser, obviously, a lesser impact than would a structure with any coverage. There's no change in coverage, gross floor area, or living area. As to suitability of site and impact on natural environment, again, the site has been developed for almost 70 years. And given that we are close to Sulfur Springs or Bucks Creek or Nantucket Sound, whatever you want to call it, I did want to take a moment to note that the Conservation Commission heard this some time ago and approved it. The deck is to be built above an already disturbed lawn area. It's not virgin territory. There are significant mitigation plantings in excess of that which is required. And as is necessary for a structure in the adjacent upland resource area, the project was found to not adversely affect the environment and, in fact, to enhance the values sought to be protected by our conservation regulations. And I'll certainly be happy to answer more questions on that topic if there are any. As to scale, setting, mass, views, and vistas, we have a single-story or one-and-a-half-story Cape slash ranch, rather typical of the neighborhood, although there's no predominant architectural style. If you approve or the special permit to construct the deck, there will obviously be no change in scale or mass, no impact in views, vistas, or streetscape. The use will remain compatible. There are no bedrooms involved, so no septic issues. The, I believe the chair has a letter from the Board of Health, so indicating no impact on traffic flow or safety, obviously, with a deck at the rear. What is at issue is whether construction of a deck at the rear of the property above existing lawn with significant mitigation is more detrimental to the neighborhood than the current non-conforming structure, non-conforming lot, and I think that you can find that it is not. The addition of the deck will have no impact on size, on the streetscape, and with the reduction in lawn area and the mitigation, it will have a net positive environmental impact. And again, having a deck is consistent with neighboring properties. At least four on that side of the street have one. So in light of the criteria and the plans, can, I think you can find, proposed construction of a deck on this house in this location is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. I'll ask if there is anyone who would like, in the audience, who would like to speak in favor of the application, and if they can indicate that they would like to speak, we will hear them.
There's no one in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of the application.
All right, I'll read the correspondence. We have a memorandum from Judith Giorgio, health agent dated September 7th, expressing, "I have no concerns regarding the construction of the deck as proposed at this property. The deck will not encroach on the existing septic system." And we have a memorandum from Nicole Smith on behalf of the Conservation Commission saying that the Conservation Commission issued an order of conditions on June 8th, 2021, and the plan that was submitted matches the one which we approved. And that's the extent of the correspondence. I'll ask if anyone in the audience would like to speak against this appeal or has a specific question.
There is no one in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition or has a specific question.
All right, why don't we move on to board members' questions, start with Buck?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bill, I, before I start, for the record, and this has nothing exactly, well, the letter that we just read from Nicole Smith, the Conservation Commission, that letter is starting to sound like a form letter with no information at all and serves us no purpose and certainly does not address why they feel the way they felt, because there certainly is some subject matter. And I, I don't know if, it's causing me great consternation. I think that that should be addressed somehow. Second of all, Bill, I was at the site about 9:00, 9:30 this morning. Beautiful layout of the proposed deck. They had taped down, they had flags, they had corner points. Everything was perfect. Unfortunately, I had a tape measure in my pocket, and I wanted to measure the 13.4 feet to the top of the coastal bank in the southwest corner. There were no stakes for the top of the coastal bank. Now, I'm not sure if in zoning they're supposed to do that or not, but I know from previous history, conservation was always pretty adamant about staking out top of coastal bank because that was the end of the resource area, the border. So I mentioned that, nothing we can do about it now, but it does, it does bring up the question, what, what is the, in the zoning bylaw, not conservation, I'm certainly aware of Article 48 in the May 2014 Annual Town Meeting, where we changed the 100-foot buffer to the 50-foot buffer. But my question to you today, based on zoning, what is the purpose of a setback for zoning on a top of a coastal bank? I can't get my arms around that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could respond to Mr. Upson, Bill Litchfield. First, I apologize, or I'll give you a little bit of history on the staking. This was heard by conservation some time ago, and as is required at that time, the top of the coastal bank was staked, and those stakes apparently were removed. The property was rented for a significant portion of the summer, and I don't know how it happened, but the staking of the proposed deck and that of the top of the coastal bank somehow disappeared. And when we restaked it for this purpose, we did not stake the top of the coastal bank because, first of all, the engineer certified where the location was and frankly didn't think of it because I don't think it is required for you. As you know, the addition has to be staked and was. The zoning setback is 50 feet. The zoning requirement for anything when zoning is changed, however, allows a pre-existing non-conforming use to be, with a special permit by you, from you, to be changed. I rather suspect that the real issue is what is the purpose of protecting a coastal bank or having a setback from a coastal bank, or for that matter, dealing with what in conservation wording is called the adjacent upland resource area. And I think we do have to go back to the conservation, the regulations for coastal wetlands, with which I know, Mr. Upson, you're familiar. And what the Conservation Bylaw says, that any project within the setback on the top of a coastal bank shall not have an adverse effect due to wave action on the movement of sediment from the coastal bank to coastal beaches or land subject to tidal action or flooding, and shall not have an adverse effect on the stability of the coastal bank. In this particular case, while I can't speak for the Conservation Commission, I understand your point about having more substantive commentaries, they specifically find that it did not have an adverse effect on wave action. Interestingly enough, this coastal bank or this property isn't even in an AE zone. It's in the X-zone, which is the same place that 261 George Ryder Road is located. That is to say, it's not even a flood zone. The Conservation Commission found that this proposal would not, they also found that this proposal would not interfere with the natural movement of banks or with tidal flow. There is obviously an interplay between the Conservation Commission rules and regulations and our zoning bylaw, and the ZBA is charged with looking at any environmental impacts of the project, but I think, again, you can look back at what conservation rules are, and they require to find, again, that no project on the coastal bank or the 100 feet of the coast, top of a coastal bank, will have any adverse effect on identified rare species habitat or endangered species habitat or significant areas for nesting or breeding for wildlife. What we're talking about here is a lawn, and what we are doing is extending the deck out over the already disturbed lawn, but more importantly, we're filling in an area with mitigation planting shown at the south side of the plan, which will create in the area of the top of the bank a continuous vegetative, vegetated buffer zone, which is a positive. Similarly, we're constructing a couple of hundred square feet with 41 bearberry, 11 beach plum, and some St. 23 St. George, St. John's wort. So I think you've done the right thing in that you're asking a question about the environmental impact. Conservation already found that there isn't any negative, and I think that you can join them in finding that the mitigation planting, particularly down further to the south, is a net environmental gain. I don't know whether that long-winded response answered your question, and at least attempted to.
Thank you very much, Bill. It was a superb response. I'm not sure that I have any problem with what you said, but I still have issues in the back of my mind, but that's, thank you very much. Please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Litchfield. My question is simply, can you just expound upon what you mean by enhanced protected values?
Yeah, basically, it's the mitigation. Conservation, and I think all of us, feel that a turf lawn is not a notably good thing for the environment. Turf lawn implies fertilizer. Fertilizer goes down into the ground and goes out into Sulfur Springs and Bucks Creek. Here, we're getting, it's a Cape Cod lawn, but it's still a lawn. Here, we're getting rid of that. We're replacing it with the mitigation plantings. We're creating a, a area where wildlife can go in the, between the, shown as wooded on the plan. The mitigation planting will create a pathway or walkway for the, for wildlife to the south of the property adjacent to the Bucks Creek, the Bucks Creek itself.
Bill?
I have the same questions as Buck brought up about the stakeout, and I think you covered those answers. I mean, I, I didn't have a tape measure, but I did pace it off, and it seemed to be off a little bit, but it was hard, excuse me, to tell by the way it was laid out. I wouldn't even call it necessarily staked, but I think it was accurate enough where I could determine that the, the deck is shown accurately on the plan, so I think that's the only question I had.
Okay. Megan?
I have no additional questions.
Dave?
Dave Veach has no questions.
And Dave Thompson?
Dave Thompson has no questions, Bill.
And I have no further questions. Do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
Aye, so move.
Second? All those in favor? Okay. Let's move into our deliberations then. Why don't we begin with Randy?
So I'm a little bit concerned about going from 48 feet to 13.4, but I understand the issue of the mitigation and the fact that the neighbors and the Conservation Commission doesn't object, so if I were voting, I would probably support it.
Yeah, I think a big plus here is the planting that's being done. To me, that was a, that's an important aspect of this whole proposal, as is the fact, once I took a look at the backyard and looked at some of the other, you know, looked, number one, at where, where it was being built in what was really an upland area to me, in the grassed area, as well as the neighbors, almost every other cottage up that road has a similar deck off the back of their home. I, I don't see it being anything negative whatsoever, and I'll, and I'll vote to support it.
Okay. Megan?
I would agree, and I, I wholeheartedly agree with the comments that, you know, obviously people are looking for living space, and if you are not granted the ability to put a deck, you're going to want to enhance, in my opinion, that Cape Cod lawn, thus creating what I would see as sort of a detrimental effect on the environment, more so than essentially putting a dock over the lawn. So I don't think it's more detrimental. I think it meets our criteria.
All right, thank you. Dave Veach?
I, I find that it meets all of our criteria. It's certainly not substantially more detrimental. It's an improvement, and I, same thing, the previous comments, and looking at the condition of that lawn and chairs sitting on it and everything, much better to have that be a deck for all concerned, and so I will enthusiastically support this.
All right, Dave Thompson?
Dave Thompson is going to support this 100%.
Okay. And Buck?
I'll fill in for Mr. Nixon and say that I can't support it. I am upset about the lack of response from the Conservation Commission in why they said 48 feet down to 13, as Randy mentioned, is a significant, a significant difference in a restricted area. I'll call it restricted, but more importantly, that most people don't understand, the mitigation planting, and I think it's over 75%, along the proposed deck and along the side of the house, that is not mitigation planting. And I say that based on four years of serving on conservation. That is landscaping planting. It provides nothing for wildlife except for food to eat during the winter possibly, if the deer like those species. It does nothing to protect the bank, and I think the fact that they're going 40 feet past the 50-foot line, maybe we don't have to think about how it's going to be in other sites because every job is different, but I can name a number of cases where this, this just doesn't pass conservation. Different, a different board, different membership, but just six years ago, I can't support it.
Okay.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make one observation. I recognize you in deliberations. I do not agree with the 48-foot measurement. I have never agreed with it, but it didn't seem to be worthwhile. By scaling it off from the corner where we are now, is about 35 feet to the top of the coastal bank, so it's, it's a small point, but I don't think the change is quite so dramatic as mine otherwise be suggested. Could I make one further comment, Mr. Chairman?
Speed two.
Thank you. I understand Mr. Upson's concern with the Conservation Commission, and I trust that the chair will discuss that with them, but I, I think it would be, it's not up to me, but I think it would be somewhat unfortunate if this applicant were penalized as a result of one board's displeasure with another board. The application, I think, stands on its, on its, on its own, and I trust that you know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
For clarification on the difference between the 40 feet and the 35, if you take a point at the southwest corner, which is on the blueprint, 13.4 from the side lot or 13.4 from the top of the coastal bank, from that point to the closest point on the 50-foot buffer, it's two inches. It's 1.95 inches. The scale is, I presume, correct. One inch is 20 feet, so 1.95, 1.98, if we can call it two inches, it's, that's where I got the 40 feet.
All right, thank you. Okay, well, why don't we... All right, thank you. Okay, well, why don't we go ahead with our vote? I would say, from my viewpoint in reviewing this matter, I think that the plantings, which are indicated as mitigation plantings, are significant in terms of protecting the bank and wildlife access. I could agree with Buck Upson with respect to the landscaping around the deck itself and the side of the house is a different matter. And I think perhaps in the future, it makes sense for us to perhaps have some dialogue with the Conservation Commission about what we would like to see, if we can, in terms of input, so that we have a little bit better information in making our decisions. But in terms of voting today, I guess we're ready to vote. All of those, do I hear a motion, I guess?
Yes, I move to approve the application as submitted.
All right. And do we need conditions on that?
I'm hard-pressed to see for building a deck that we need conditions on it. I mean, well, aside from, I think, as is normally the case, that construction vehicles activity be contained on-site or with permission from neighbors, or, you know, butters or whatever. I'm not sure how we've worded that the best way in the past, but I think that would be sufficient in a project and location like this.
There is room in the driveway area there in front of the house for people to park to, if necessary. Okay. With those conditions, and are they clear enough for you, Sarah? Okay. With those conditions, let's go with a vote. All those in favor of the application?
Mr. Chairman, we didn't get a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Second? Second from Dave Thompson. All those in favor of the application as submitted, please raise your hands. And all those opposed? All right. That vote is four to one, and it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's not my place, but are you required to take a roll-call vote?
I believe we are. Okay, so I will take the roll-call vote. Mr. Thompson?
Dave Thompson votes yes.
Mr. Veach?
Dave Veach votes yes.
Mr. Grau?
William Grau votes yes.
Mr. Upson?
James Upson votes no.
And I, as chair, will vote yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, that concludes our agenda with respect to those items. We still have some minutes from August 26, I believe it is. Is that subject to approval?
I move approval of the minutes as submitted.
And is there a second?
Second.
Dave Thompson. All right, all those in favor, raise your hands. And opposed. All right, thank you. And I don't believe we have any other business to come before the meeting, but we do have to have a vote to adjourn. Is that correct? So do we do that by a roll-call as well?
Yes, opening and closing the meeting always has to be by roll-call.
Okay. Dave Thompson?
Dave Thompson votes to adjourn.
And Dave Veach?
Dave Veach votes to adjourn.
All sample votes to adjourn.
Megan Storey votes to adjourn.
William Grau votes to adjourn.
Randy Pardash votes to adjourn.
James Upson votes to adjourn.
All right, we are adjourned as of?
4:49 PM.
4:49 PM. Thank you.